Oh, okay. Aquarius Pisces.
Capricorn.
I could see that.
Are we saying this?
But like you're the nicest Capricorn ever.
Hey now, Capricorn are nice.
Excuse me. No, I will go on record. Capricorns, no, absolutely not.
They are misunderstood, I would say. I'm here for you.
This episode of the But How Though Podcast is brought to you by BGD Digital Marketing, amplifying voices since 2020. For more information, visit bgddigitalmarketing.com. Welcome to the But How Though Podcast where we ask your favorite business owners, leaders, innovators, idea geniuses, but how though, to give every single dreamer and ambitious person in the world a tangible roadmap to live your dreams. And not in the fufu way, in the real way. On the mic is yours truly, Brittany B G D Garcia Dumas. And I have with me my co-host for the day.
Nikki, AKA Nikki Knack, AKA.
With the Guises. Exactly, exactly. And today, on the But How The Podcast, we have school board member Brooklyn Richardson. Excited to talk about how to become a school board member. So something that I really love about Brooklyn is that, one, she'll tell you like it is, period. Two, to me, you feel like a regular schmugular. Like to me, you're like, well, she, she worked really hard and she has great character and great integrity and that's how she got the job. And I feel like that's so many people who want to do this role. Uh, and so that's why we're having Brooklyn Richardson, school board member Brooklyn Richardson on to tell us more about how you become a school board member. Are you ready?
But how though?
Okay, so first, hot questions, straight out the gate. What is your getting pumped, getting ready song?
That is a trick question because I have a playlist that is eclectic and is widespread and diverse as Arlington itself. I can go anything from, we can go Kendrick Lamar, okay? We can also go to Mumford and Sons. I'm a diehard child of the eighties and nineties. Dave Matthews Band, number forty-one. Ladies, let's go deeper cut. Also was raised by a dad who loved classic rock. So anytime I can do Bob Seger, anything like that, ZZ Top.
Wait, aren't they Texan?
Yes, okay. So here's something that I don't feel like hardly anybody knows. One, she was a PK. Shout out to us who know what a PK is, a pastor's kid. And two, you are currently, right now, your paid job. Is what?
I am on staff at Westminster Presbyterian Church as their youth and children's minister.
Do you know your Enneagram?
No, because I am ADD and I think they all could be me at times. I have chased them all. No, there are times I think I know, but I don't.
Do you know your Enneagram?
Yes, with a wing seven.
Obviously. I'm a seven, so sevens are the only ones that matter. Oh, okay. Aquarius Pisces.
Capricorn. Are we saying this?
But like you're the nicest Capricorn ever.
Hey now, Capricorn are nice.
Excuse me. No, I will go on record. Capricorns, no, absolutely not.
They are misunderstood, I would say. I'm here for you.
What's your favorite cafeteria lunch?
Oh, hands down. That's easy. Nacho day. Oh my gosh, there's nothing like school nachos. My kids were at the same elementary school. I went to both lunches when it was nacho day. I would hit his lunch and then her lunch.
See, this is one of the things that I love about Brooklyn is that I feel like there's this perception that when you run for any kind of elected office, that you have like kiss your social life goodbye. Like you're a totally different person. And I think that's what prevents a lot of people from doing it because they think I have to be this type of person in order to, to hold this role. And I feel like you are such a great representative of, you know, like you're yourself. You have decorum and you like can carry yourself as a professional. But like, uh, you also have a life that you continue to live.
Think you have to know a time and a place of what's appropriate, what's not, what's your audience. The way that I'm gonna act with kids in my nursery is gonna be different than I act with my youth group, different than I act with my friends. But all of that is still real and it still is who I am at the end of the day. But you know where there's a time and a place. No, my life is still gonna go on. I'm a mom. I have two kids. I have a daughter who's wrapping up eighth grade, a son finishing fifth grade. I have a husband who travels all the time. We still have to live our life while I serve on the school board.
And would you say that that is an asset to you being a school board member? Like that is an asset you bring to the table is your personal life, like how you, like the fact that you are a mom of two and you have these other things that just make up your life, like those are not in any way liabilities to performing the job. It's actually an asset that you bring to the job.
One hundred percent because I know what our families are going through, even in small ways. Maybe I'm not living the exact same life as everybody, but we're all in it together. And at the end of the day, I know that when I send my kids to school, I am sending the very best I can. Some days it's not very good. Some days it is a hot mess. Yesterday he had his shorts on backwards and had on, yeah, I, yes. And, but I was sending my best to that school. So are our parents. And some days it doesn't look pretty, but they're doing their best as well. And I get it.
I love it. I love it. And, uh, something about Arlington is that all the correspondence from A I S D is in English and in Spanish. Talk about that. What are you, like, how has that been helpful?
Well, we are so diverse in our community. On our campuses, we have over eighty languages that are spoken.
In Arlington?
In Arlington, over eighty languages are spoken on our campuses. We are so diverse. And so when we do our communications, we have to make sure that we are speaking to the parents in a language they understand. How do we get that communication in a way that they are gonna consume it and be able to act on it? We have to meet people where they are. We can't keep expecting people to come to our level, speak English, do it our way. No, where are you so we can give you our best and provide you? I mean, it's customer service at the end of the day. Our district has to provide great customer service.
Yeah. So, uh, as a matter of fact, what is a school board member? Like, okay, if aliens land. And they say, somebody tell us what is a school board member. In five words, what would you say? And then, and then we'll, and then expand more. But in five words, what would you say a school board member is?
Over caffeinated, sleep deprived, over committed person.
She says what the sip from her diet.
That's only me. Um, a school board member is a non-paid public servant advocate for kids.
Love.
Love. Period. Okay. Well, thank you so much for joining us.
We gotta go now.
Wow. Okay. So tell, tell us more about what a school member does, like, like during the day. I also wanna know, like, what is your actual schedule? Cause like, is this a full-time job? Is this like you clock in? Tell us.
Okay. A typical day for me does not exist. It just, it's, it's not real. Having a paid job with the church, having an unpaid volunteer job, being a trustee, being a mom and a wife, a daughter. My week can vary a lot. Um, I was talking to my husband the other day and one thing that he had never fully processed is I don't have a day off. It just doesn't, most people at least have something. Saturday, we are with kids. We're doing with sports. Last Saturday, we were at Miracle League kicking off their twentieth anniversary and representing the district. You were constantly going to, um, student affairs, plays, all these things on the weekend. And then Sunday I work. I work a full day on Sunday. And then Monday we do it again. So it, it gets intense for me at times and I'm trying to learn balance. I think all women are trying to learn balance. It is something I am constantly, constantly working on is, um, make the main thing, the main thing. But the main thing is always changing. What is our actual job? We have one employee. We hire and fire the superintendent. He is our only employee. He is accountable to us and in our district, it's Dr. Matt Smith. We hired him a year ago. We work with the superintendent and then he goes to the staff and the cabinet members and puts what we say into action.
The staff of A I S D.
So we have one employee. Our other job is we set the budget for the year. We help figure out where we need to come up and cut. What are we gonna do with our numbers? Teacher raises? We vote on that. That's who decides. For the fifth year in a row, we are the highest paying district. We know what our teachers are worth. They're worth what a George Clooney is, but since that's not in the budget, we stick with a.
Or a Mal Clooney, for that matter.
So, uh, yeah, we hire and fire superintendent. We set the budget. We do quite a few other things, but all of our work is governance. So if you came to me and Brittany, you're like, I am sick of my daughter's basketball coach. She needs to go. Cool. That's not my lane. We're governance. School board handbook, you wanna talk about what the dress code is, things like that? Come to us. We can talk. We've had students come to us about the handbook. Dress code, is it sexist? Is there there things they want changed? We've had students come and advocate for what they want and need. Those are things that we can do in our governance lane.
If a student is like, I wanna talk about spaghetti straps and I wanna talk about short shorts and blah, blah, how do they go about doing that?
They would go to a governance committee chaired by Sarah McMurrow, our vice president, and I would say, you would email them, let them know the changes you would like to make, and could you meet and speak with them? That would be up to them. If you did not have the opportunity that you feel like you would want to speak to the governance committee in the board, you could then send an email to all board members. Or last, you could attend one of our board meetings. We hold them twice a month on Thursday nights. You sign up to be a non-agenda item speaker. And for three minutes, you can come talk about anything you want. You may not disparage someone. You may not be calling ugly names. You cannot do. However, any concerns you have in our district, you have three minutes. Anyone in the community can sign up and speak. All they have to do is sign up by three o'clock the day we meet. So there you go.
And then you have your three minutes. So where can we, where can somebody who lives in Arlington, if you're, if you're gonna go to an A I S D school board meeting, live in Arlington?
You don't have to.
Really?
Anyone can speak at our meetings. Correct. Absolutely.
Like even somebody from Dallas?
Yes. Do you have an interest in here? Are you concerned about students? Maybe it's your grandchild. Maybe you used to be a teacher here. Maybe you just wanna come and say, hey, y'all are doing a great job. Nobody does that, but if you did. Anybody can speak. Anybody.
Love that. I never even thought about that. I mean, because it's true. If you're outside of Arlington, it could still affect you, what's happening in Arlington.
Uh, so where could they find that information? Online?
A I S D dot net. Go there. You're gonna go to school board meetings. Click on it. It's gonna give you an email and a phone number to sign up. Just make sure you're doing it by three o'clock.
Yeah. Yeah. You are an active participant, whether you choose to be or not. Like you, you're by a four, baby. You know, like this, you're, you're the, how many school board members are there?
Seven.
Seven. There's, you're the, you're the eighth school board member. Like you're the people. You have a seat. You're choosing not to sit in that, you know?
Do you want to solve your problem and is it real or do you want to complain? You wanna solve it, come to us. If you wanna complain or you want an echo chamber, go to social media. They will echo you. They will burn you down. They will add gasoline and they will give you a whole bunch of data that probably isn't even factual.
Too real, too real.
So how do you, uh, uh, okay, I'm asking for a friend. How do you deal with people not liking you in the role you're in? Like literally, you are elected. It's like, it's genuinely a popularity contest, like the popular vote wins, right? And to your point, you're very held accountable to a lot of people. And so when, like essentially your job depends on people liking you to a degree, how do you alchemize, to use, to use Guz's word? Some people aren't gonna like me. How do you deal with that?
That's a hard one because it depends on the day how I handle it. Am I, am I healthy myself? And if I'm healthy myself, then I can handle it. If I am not healthy and who I am in that moment, my response may not be the best. And that's, that's when I know I need to go work on me. What response do I give somebody? I tend to be logical. What bothers me is when there are complaints and issues and people don't come directly to the source. I'm a big believer, if you truly have a problem and if it bothers you enough, you talk to the person. If you're not talking to the person, it's not a real problem. Then you just want to complain and whine and vent. And you want to have a platform and a stage and you want to be, no, that's not a real problem. Real problem you solve, you go to that person.
Ooh, real problem you solve.
Yes.
There you go. Is she preaching?
Little preach, girl. Little preach.
I just think there's something to be said that when you really want to handle something, you do.
Yeah. We now know what a school board member is. We know what a school board member is not. We know how to access a school board member. I wanna know about the day before you decided to run. Because as we've mentioned, you're a regular schmugular. Like you're just, you're a citizen of Arlington. Tell me about the moment you decided to run for school board and like what it felt like, like essentially like the inception of this idea.
Well, see, I lost my mind that day. I have always served on different levels, local levels, PTA, the room, um, the committee, site-based decision-making, I mean, all these acronyms that you don't care about. And it just, I really thought like maybe within ten years when my kids are older, I would do school board. That, I could really make a difference and I would understand I'd have time. But God has this sense of humor and, um, sometimes he says ten years is now, actually. Someone on the board had stopped and talked to me and said like, oh, you should consider this. And I really respected her opinion. She is a past board president. I, I just, she'd mentioned it multiple times. Couple of other people had. Our past superintendent one time had mentioned it in passing and I respect Dr. Cavassos immensely. But enough nuggets had been planted and seeds dropped that, okay. And then, um, there was gonna be a candidate the year that I ran in the place and he was not able to. He is an incredible human being, but his job did not allow him to do it at that time. I met with, um, someone at the school board and their wife, my husband, I did to say, okay, what are we actually looking at? And, uh, he said, two meetings a month. Okay, that's doable. The joke now is which two meetings a month he didn't specify. Rewind. The week before that, I had gone on a girl's trip to New Orleans with my travel besties. Just the ladies, we went, went and supported a woman arguing in front of the Fifth Circuit Court, appellate court. She's amazing. While there, over hurricanes, I decided, uh, to tell them what God had been putting on my heart as I sipped my hurricane. And they thought it was the hurricane talking. And I was like, no, see, like, I think I wanna run for school board. No, really. You wanna talk about women who will empower you and call you crazy at the same time? They did it. You have lost your mind, but we got you. Came back, set up that meeting, two meetings a week, month, sure. Let's do it.
Wow. Tell us some of the things that you learned along that path or things you didn't know would happen.
I didn't realize how much money it costs to run a campaign. I did not realize the fundraising that I was going to need to do. Those big signs you see on the highway and on streets, uh, those are over a hundred dollars each.
Oh my goodness.
Then you get into the posts that go in. You have yard signs, you have T-shirts. You have to run, um, social media ads. We did a text campaign. We were printing printed materials. You walk and door knock every day from the time you sign up until the last vote is cast. You walk those doors in the rain, the sun, the Texas heat, even when your feet are tired, even when it's eight o'clock, to go knock and meet people and explain and answer questions. That takes a lot of money. My campaign cost me right at twenty-eight thousand dollars. It was all donated. Every bit was donated by people who supported and believed in me, which I will never forget nor take lightly or for granted. I have some notes that came during that time that I will forever, they don't even know it. I will forever treasure. Um, and right now, my campaign balance, like we have to do our finance report each year. My balance is zero. I have zero. I left it all on the table. We actually, as a family, have to pay right now to store my signs. So we pay a hundred dollars a month to store those silly signs. So it's so silly, but my husband always says, please quit taking volunteer jobs.
We are maxed out.
Right? We are paying for your volunteer jobs.
So, okay, how long was your campaign? Like from the moment you were like, I'm gonna run to when you were elected, how long was that?
January fifteenth approximately until May, uh, either third, fourth or fifth. It was one of the three.
And this might be already going to be addressed, but what prepared you for this? Like, are you taking government glasses? How, how do you know all of the terminology, the lingo, what you can do, what you can't do? Like what all goes into it? Cause you have the position. So, you know, as a layman, I'm just in there like, um, um, you know what I'm saying? And you're, you're saying all of these like terms and how do you get to know that side of it?
I drank from a fire hydrant. And I still feel like I am sometimes. We went, um, the year I was elected, they started something called Summer Leadership Institute through the state of Texas that we were able to go to. And it gave us three days of in-depth, hard, complicated training. But before that, while I was running, when I decided to run, I already had a really pretty good background because I have always been a nerd and I've watched school board meetings online. Like this is politics, schools, this is stuff that I was passionate about long before. So having that background, participating in district committees, you can't go and serve at the top until you've done some of these little, small. And they're actually not little and small. They're important pieces of the machine that make us work. So doing that. But I also did a lot of education on my own. There's a company called Raise Your Hand Texas. It's a nonprofit. They are amazing and they put out, uh, videos that will teach you school finance. How does this work? What does this mean? They, it's like school education for dummies. It was awesome because my last government class was in high school. In the nineties in Abilene, Texas. It's been a little bit.
And Arlington is the fourth most diverse city in Texas?
That's what I understand. And we are the thirteenth largest district in the state of Texas. And we are the largest employer in Arlington. We have over eight thousand employees.
Whoa, okay. Okay. So here, here's the thing that, uh, I also, like, the whole reason we started this podcast was because if you can see it, you can be it, right? There are, to Guz's point, there are so many people who see school board members and it feels so far beyond them. It feels like they were born into this role or something. Like it just feels so intangible, you know? And, but as I've grown into these things, I'm like, oh, it's just this, you know? Like, and yes, there are steps. Yes, there are things. But giving people a frame of reference of like, this is what it looks like to run for a school board. This is what it looked like. They just have to know the, I won't say like the ease of it, but like accessibility, the accessibility of, this is, like we mentioned, you're the eighth school, school board member. Like you're, you belong here. This is your seat on this board, on this commission. These seats belong to you. And it does take being a little brave to go towards that. But that seat is by a four. It is created for you. And what an injustice we are doing for our own communities by not stepping into that, you know?
Well, I think what you're saying is so correct because how often do we feel like somebody is kept behind the red carpet, red curtain? Or the rope, or you can't see behind. Nope. This is just, oh no, you belong. And in fact, we will build a bigger table to accommodate you because the more voices we have, the better we are and the better that we get to listen.
This episode of the But How The Podcast is brought to you by The Arlington Shop, Arlington's only city swag store. Find all your favorite Arlington gear at thearlingtonshop.com.
One of the biggest things I was told, and it turned out to be true, was people are gonna surprise you in some really bad ways. Some people you really thought you knew, it's gonna hurt. And then some people that you didn't know are gonna surprise you in the best possible way. That right there came true time after time. It continues to come true in my life and I'm grateful. I am surprised about how much being a school board trustee is not always about students. It's about adults. Making a mess.
Too real.
It's about the adults and that blew me away. I thought we all came in with the same best intentions, right? Aren't we all here to do it for the, isn't this what? I was shocked. I was shocked when I found out that people said, um, we let porn in the libraries and we are having kids switch their genders while they're at school. And we, oh, here's the great one. We have a, uh, cat litter box in classrooms for them to go to the bathroom. Cause if you identify as a cat, we are do. Ma'am, if we could indoctrinate your children, we would indoctrinate them with math, science and reading and to wear deodorant. I was gonna say, gosh, nobody has time for this, but yet it's the dog whistles. If we blow that dog whistle loud enough and get people fired up. Then it's, we don't have to think about funding education.
What are some things that people may not know about A I S D?
A I S D, what do they not know?
Like the, the fourth most diverse.
We speak, we have eighty languages spoken. We have seventy-six campuses. We have, uh, I think it's fifty-six elementary, thirteen junior highs and ten high schools. We have P tech programs. There's pathway programs. You can go learn cybersecurity. You can learn health and science. You can graduate as a senior with your associate's degree, if not more, for free. Did you hear me? For free. You can have your education done. We have a career tech center. You can go get all of your certifications for HVAC, firemen, fireperson, fireperson. HVAC welding. One of the welding teachers said that his kids graduated, had all their certs and was able to walk out and was making a hundred thousand dollars as an eighteen-year-old. And no debt for that family. None. We are incredible. We provide free pre-K. Free pre-K.
And one, okay, one of the only school districts like around in North Texas, like what?
In Texas, we are one of the few, very few. Because again, it's free. Most do not provide that.
Three year, pre-K three, pre-K four? My daughter actually benefited from that. She went to three K, four K kindergarten. Like she's, she's learned. Thank you to A I S D.
Our big butt of the week, if you do not know, it's our shout out segment where we spotlight something or someone that made a big impact, as big butts do. So, okay, I'll go first. My big butt of the week is in the vein of school board. I had the great opportunity to go to Lamar High School for the Girls Rock Expo twenty twenty-five. It was the first year they've done, they, apparently they do it for boys every year. And we were like, um, excuse me, wrongo. Not that they don't deserve it, but you know, girls also. And so I got to go and speak, I mean, there was like, I'm gonna, I'm gonna say a hundred and fifty, two hundred high school girls. I was very scared. I'm, I'm gonna admit, I was a little.
Because they're taller than you?
Because they're all taller. And, um, high school girls are still a little scary. I'm gonna be honest. Okay. So I got to go and talk to two hundred high school girls from Lamar High School and speak on community impact. And tell them, like, here are the roles that you can have. School board member, uh, city council member, volunteer, business owner, like all these different things. It was incredible. I had no reason to be scared. They're amazing. Um, but it was, it, I know I was there to make an impression on them. But the trope is so true. Like I was so impressed with them. Like we, I think we took this like nineteen ninety-five teen beat quiz of like, which one would you be? And so I had them all stand up and introduce themselves according to their new role. And so you have these girls who say, mayor, Brittany Garcia Dumas, school board member, Nikki Rodriguez. Like they're saying it. And my thought is if they can say it out loud in front of these people, they're so much closer to it than I ever was in high school. So that the girls of Lamar High School, they get my big butt of the week.
Vikings fight, never die.
Did you go to Lamar?
No, but I'm a trustee. I, yeah, Vikings fight, never die. Let's do it.
Love it. Eric Guz.
Okay. Something that made a big impact on me in this past week, I, I'm trying to get into reading y'all. But for real, for real, um, I made it a goal to read thirty-six books this year. So that's three books a month. And I've surpassed that already and we're in.
You are a reading fool. To follow you on Instagram is to get the consistent book recs. Okay.
Love. And I'm trying to diversify what I read also, not just, you know, I, I'm seeing a lot of romanticy in, in the streets, in the TikTok streets. And I'm trying to get some memoirs, some nonfiction, some fiction, some fan. No, I'm not doing fantasy. Sorry. Um, but you know.
Okay. I'm writing you down a book that you need to read.
Okay. Yes. Okay. So that's exactly what I was gonna say. Memoir. So that's what I was going to say. I read, or I listened to rather, which was more impactful, I would say, than having to actually read the physical book. But I listened to, excuse me, um, Chanel, that's on my T V R. I listened to Chanel Miller's, um, memoir. And she is, if you don't know who she is, her, her book title is actually Know My Name. She is the, um, victim of Brock Turner, the rape case in two twenty fifteen. She is the, um, victim of Brock Turner, the rape case in two twenty fifteen. Correct. So it was really impactful because, you know, you say her name and you don't know her immediately, but you say Brock Turner and your face turns immediately. You know who that is. Um, so her book, Know My Name is exactly that, just telling the story of what happened. Um, what it was like, you know, from the night of the, um, the, um, incident to actually, the hospital afterwards, the trial, the, uh, after the trial, uh, just everything that went, went on and the ins and outs. And it was just, just super impactful and you get a very specific look at what victims go through and things that don't get talked about on social media because they're kind of hush, hush. They're kind of a heavy thing to speak about. So just listening to her and her own voice kind of go over it.
She reads it. She reads it.
Yeah, it's amazing. And it was a tough read because it is a hard subject matter. However, it was so worth it. There's so much wisdom in it. There's so much, um, nuggets that you can, um, information you can glean from her perspective. And it was just amazing. I really, really enjoyed it. So I do recommend that. And more than that, I recommend the audiobook. So you can listen to her, her voice on the subject. So.
Amazing, amazing. All right. Brooklyn?
Do you want me to sing? I like big butts and I cannot lie. Cause that's all I can think of.
That's literally the only reason you're here.
Yeah, big butts of the week. I told you I'm a child of the eighties and nineties like.
Um, okay.
Sir Mix a Lot.
I, vibe was, uh, I went to something called the Red State Revivals last week. It was by Nadia Bowles Weber. She is a Lutheran minister, ordained minister. And hearing her speak, she did her testimony through worship songs like old hymns, but also by telling her church heard how she has gotten to where she is, what she has done. But what she came and said that has stuck with me, that I, I, I don't think I will ever forget this one in my heart, is that God is still God, no matter what is happening in our world. There is nothing we are ever gonna do that's gonna change it. And our world right now feels scary. It feels unknown. Our economy, our children, the state of education, there's so much unknown, but man has been here for a really long time. And man has done a lot of things to mess it up. Great emperors have fallen. Mad kings have fallen. We have seen the worst of the worst and yet he is still here. We are still here and we will be too, when everything is said and done. It will be okay. And having that reminder, cause man, sometimes I'm like, how are we even gonna get through one more week? How are we gonna get through four years? How are we gonna get through ten years? That reminder, God is still God. We will still be here and we are loved. We are loved. Man, I walked out of that church that night being like, okay, you're right. I can handle anything. All I have to do is keep being what I'm called to do and to love others.
Wow. Period. Done. Deal. You gonna go run for school board now?
You know what? Personal anecdote. So I'm on the P T A, vice president of the P T A.
You're vice president?
I am.
Of the P T A?
I am. Shook. I know.
Can I have your autograph?
Uh, of course.
My world is rocked.
Really? We've talked about this and I'm on the P T A and every time you're like, they hate me on the P T A. I'm like, well, I am not them. I, you could be us. I am you, you are me and I am the face. So come on. Anyways, so.
I'm here.
I.
Blown back.
As vice president of the P T A, we got invited to, I'm gonna screw this up. It was the Council of P T A, yes.
Award luncheon.
Yes, I was there and it was great. And it, it kind of got me, it was a lot of just like, this is what's happening and blah, blah, blah. Words, 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 as Brittany says. Um, but it, it did get me, it did get me thinking. You know, I joined the P T A because I wanted to get involved in my daughter's school. I have a flexible schedule now so I can be there for her and be at all her games, her practices, her concerts, her this, that or the other. Volunteer my time concessions, et cetera. And I'm like, I want to do more. I want to be more involved. I want to know the teachers. I want to know the kids. I want to know, I want to know, I want to be there. I'm a friendly face. There's, I'm not scary. I want to get to know everybody. And so I joined the P T A and, um, it got me thinking like, what else? How, how much further can I go? I love the kids. I love getting to talk to her friends, people that aren't her friends. And they're like, hi, Ms. Rodriguez. Hi, Audrey's mom. And I just love that. I feel connected to them. And I see now, I see her and all of them. I'm like, that, she, that's my kid too. And so I have a heart for them. I have a heart for the teenagers and my daughter's fifteen. She's a freshman. And so I'm like, what else is there? There's more. What more? What, how much further can I go with this? What, and obviously I don't feel equipped in that, in that lane. I don't know anything about government. I don't know anything about pol-, I don't know anything about any of that, but I have the heart for it. And I'm like, what, what, how, what is there? So this is like universe led right now. I'm like, wow, I'm seeing a different side of all of this. So yeah, interesting.
Hey, guys, you want me to tell you something?
Tell me.
You can go as far as you want. You're the only one stopping yourself. You can go as far as you want. We can connect you. We can plug you in. We can help you be more involved in the community because what you just said is your daughter is in all of those kids.
Right.
You don't serve just to help your kid. If so, you're doing it the wrong way.
Exactly.
But you got a hundred, you got fifty-six thousand other kids that look like her.
Yeah.
There's nothing stopping you.
Yeah.
Nothing.
Brother, I'm gonna cry. What the heck?
Only, only heart required, you know? Like what's required to run for school board? I mean, yeah, there's these like other little things that like end up happening. And to your point, you become equipped as you move forward, but only heart required.
Those things can be taught.
Yeah.
That is all being taught. What you can't teach is empathy and compassion and drive. That you can't teach. That's who you are.
Well, Brooklyn, thank you so much for being on the But How Though Podcast. I hope everybody got a tangible pathway forward. If you want to serve on school board, if you want to serve on a board, a commission, city council, mayor, any of those things, to Brooklyn's point and Guz's point, go as far as you want to go. Absolutely. Why not? It's for, this seat belongs to you.
Absolutely.
Why not? Where can people reach you if they have any questions?
You can go on the A I S D website. You go to Board of Trustees. Listed right there is my email address and my actual cell phone number. That is not somebody else. That is mine.
Wow.
Uh, it is brooklyn.richardson.aisd@gmail.com. Cell phones, eight one seven three zero one seven two eight two. You can call, you can text, um, follow on Facebook at Brooklyn Reed. Uh, no, not maiden name in that one. Brooklyn Richardson for A I S D. Best part about that is I get to show all the awesome campuses that we get to visit and the kids who maybe don't get that constant recognition that they absolutely deserve.
I love it. Awesome. Thank you so much, Brooklyn.